All right, it's 2:01 PM, so I'm gonna call the Wednesday, October 3 meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee to Order. I want to welcome Girl Scout Troop 62650. Thanks for being here. It's exciting that you get to watch some government in action here at our Rules Committee meeting, so I hope you'll learn something today by joining us. Let's start with roll call.
Kamai.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Jimenez.
Present.
Foley.
Here.
Chacon.
Here.
You have the call.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start by reviewing the agenda for next week's council meeting, Tuesday, October 29. There is, it's listed as 9:30, we're gonna discuss the starting time for closed session, and then regular session at 1:30. We'll start with consent on page 5. And then continues on page 6. And section 3 on page 7, we have the Policy and Council Questions for the Human Resources Director. Section 5.1, we have Speed Safety System Use Policy Impact Report. Section 6.1, the Semi-Annual Update for Climate Smart. Section 7.1, we have Beautify San Jose Neighborhood Blight Status Report. And the last item is 8.1, the Establishment of the Monterey Corridor Business Improvement District. There's also an ad sheet. Do we have any members of the public?
There was no public comment.
Okay, we'll come back, and I'll recognize Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. I'd like to request that we change closed session from a start time of 9:30 to 9 o'clock. We have two reviews that we'll be doing for our staff, our council appointees, and we needed a little bit extra time to do that. And with that, I move approval of the agenda with the 9 o'clock start time for closed session.
Second.
Okay, we are going to vote on that. The motion did not include the addition of ad sheet. We will take a vote. All right, that motion carries 5-0. Now we're gonna review the agenda for Tuesday, November 5. That one again is a 9:30 start time, 1:30 regular session. Consent starts on page 4, and continues on pages 5, 6, and 7. All right, section 3, we have item 3.3, Annual Investment Fee Report for the Retirement Skipping head to section 7, we have Consolidated Annual Homelessness Report. Section 8, Resolution of Intention to Establish Pedestrian Mall in Poe Street. And 8.2 is a Tully Road Business Improvement District. No land use. Do we have any members of the public?
No public comment.
Okay. Councilmember Foley.
Move approval of the November 5 agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, no other hands up, so let's vote. All right, that motion carries 5-0, and we are on to our consent calendar. We have two items on consent today. Do we have any public comment on consent?
Yes, we have public comment.
Blair?
Hi, Claire Beekman. I'll be in California here for a month more, and then I'll be traveling to Southeast Asia. Nice to be here today. Item 1, on public record, public comment, there was a few letters about Omar Torres, what you're going to be asking, what to be doing about his situation. It was a council here yesterday. I'm very sorry that this has happened. I think Omar Torres has been a friend, and I think he can be really considered a friend in very difficult decisions we're all gonna have to be addressing in the next few weeks and months with his life. And I hope that we can treat his life decently. It can help with a better life for all of us in the future. With that said, I'm interested in the second item, which is about items around stormwater issues for yourselves. And that has been quite a ride, that's been quite a new experience for ourselves and for California cities. We're getting a lot of new federal funding dollars, and it's changed our philosophy, how you consider stormwater, the unhoused living around our creeks and river areas. San Diego, where I've been living the past few years now, has been dealing with some of the same issues. They've been working on new ordinance issues that ends encampments on their city streets and their downtown areas. All those people in the downtown have moved to their river areas. And I've been trying to say at their meetings, you know, you really gotta look at what San Jose's been going through with your water issues and unhoused. You're gonna be following their footsteps soon. And I think they can be developing some really good humanistic practices, and it's why you've invited Valley Water to really address the issue better. Good luck to take a really humanistic approach, learn from San Diego and the Valley Water.
All right, I think we're back to committee. Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote. Okay, consent calendar is approved 5-0. And now we're on to item C1. Sarah is here to give us a report on the annual city council referrals.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm actually gonna hand it over to Tom Westfall.
Good afternoon, committee members. Tom Westfall, I'm the Deputy Director for Plans, Policy, and Strategic Support in the City Manager's Office. Today, staff is bringing forward the annual City Council Referral Status Report as required by Council Policy 0-12. This is the first time the administration is bringing forward this item. Historically, the city manager has provided summaries of outstanding city council referrals through direct correspondence to mayor and council. Last May, city council updated Council Policy 0-12 to include this annual report to the Rules Committee. Moving forward, the administration will bring this report to the Rules Committee each fall. The city manager will also continue to provide episodic updates on council referrals through direct correspondence with the mayor and council. The staff memo provides an itemized status of all active council referrals, which is listed in Memo Attachment A. Please note that these statuses are as of their last update at the end of August. At that time, there were 236 referrals that were either not started or in progress. About 75% of those open referrals were from the recently completed fiscal year '24-'25 budget process, which had just concluded at the time. The memo also includes a macro-analysis and accounting of all council referrals issued since the start of fiscal year '21-'22. As part of this annual report, the administration will also bring forward requests to drop and defer active council referrals. Dropping a council referral instructs city staff to stop all related action. Deferring a city council referral directs staff to temporarily pause related action until a specified future date. This year, we are recommending dropping three council referrals, two referrals to PR&amp;S and another to the city's homelessness team. Justifications for all three referral drop recommendations are listed in Memo Attachment B. These three referrals either can no longer continue for legal or technical reasons, or were overridden by subsequent council direction. Staff also recommend temporarily deferring staff action on the digital wayfinding referral to prioritize staff resources on preparing for the upcoming major events in 2026. More information on this recommendation is listed in Attachment C. Staff from the requesting departments are here today to answer questions on these drop and defer requests. Moving forward, staff anticipate continuing to make progress on completing all open referrals, and will provide an updated summary of outstanding referrals to the city council through direct correspondence in spring of 2025. That concludes staff report. We welcome committee feedback and questions.
Thank you so much for the report. I do appreciate that every year, that we're now starting to see this into all-in-one place, a big list of everything that we've asked as a council, that staff handles, and getting this update is very helpful. Let's see first if we have any public comment.
Blair, please make your way to the podium. You will have two minutes to speak.
Hi, Claire Beekman. Thanks a lot for this item. Thank you for speaking to digital wayfinding issues. I think I heard you say that is to be deferred as part of a process into 2026, which, boy, it sounds like something really is coming in 2026. I didn't understand what exactly that will be. But as this item is being deferred, it was supposed to be here in November, and it's, I guess, being moved, and I'm thankful for that. I hope that in that time, that we can be developing important conversations, how to be more honest with each other, and how to be, to really explain simply, and I mean simply, what wayfinding technology can do, and what its purpose is and what it's capable of doing. And to have that conversation to be clear and open, instead of keeping it hidden and secretive, and only for a select few to understand. We have to be at a time to be moving forward in how we talk to each other about our community and our technology practices. And it's vital to be responsible, and for you guys to continuously dumb down the process to such a degree that it just brings shame, and people get turned off. And that's, that's your confusion and anger and apathy that people have towards a system that you really want to address, and that we're really wondering why people are so turned off and angry. I mean, watch how much you guys lie and can't be honest about our technology in talking about it with the community. Please try to learn how to make that little step to be more honest about the process. I don't think it will cause the end of the world to explain things better. It engages ourselves, it asks for responsibility, it asks for better clear practices of public safety, actually. We can all be doing things better. It's important San Diego learns this. They have problems. Good luck.
No other public comment.
All right, I will start with Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. I do appreciate seeing this and having the opportunity to ask, to ask questions in public since Eric is here. I know the, the drop for the NBA 2020 to 2025 Community Plan to End Homelessness Assessment is actually under Omar Passan's, but I do have a question about, I didn't understand the rationale about why, why we're gonna be dropping the assessment on the Community Plan to End Homelessness. Is that something you can speak to, Eric?
Eric Solivan, Housing Director. So the dropping of the assessment isn't necessarily eliminating that workload. What we're doing with the Community Plan to End Homelessness as we're going into the next phase of the overall planning is merging the two initiatives, so we can get to a more comprehensive set as to how we better align our shelter systems, our strategies and initiatives. So that work isn't necessarily being eliminated, it's just folded into other work that is being done.
So we'll still be, we'll still be tracking metrics, but will we, will we be assessing whether we're, whether we're on the way to success or to functional zero?
Correct, exactly. And that's gonna be the new target as we're rolling out this implementation strategy for how best to assess our current work, how do we take from council directives, where does that fit into our strategy as we're functioning, as we're heading towards a focus on getting to functional zero and unsheltered homelessness.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I, I also just wanna say, since we have our D5 council member here, I think it's, I understand why $400,000 would be given to turf replacement instead of a master plan, but I do think that, I just wanna say publicly, I think it would be a good idea for us to try to do some fundraising with our sports teams to actually do a master plan and improve Powell Stadium. It's something that's recognized by the sports team as an underutilized resource, by the sports teams, I should say, as an underutilized resource. And that came through during our In-Community Week when we did our Sports Roundtable. So that's for staff, but also for the D5 council member, and happy to work on that with you, Peter. And then my last question is about the deferral of the digital wayfinding ordinance, and I know that I don't see Chris Burton here. I did text him when I saw this and said I have questions, so I'm not sure if, if you can answer this, or if somebody is here to answer that, why we are deferring that work when, till June 2026, when it will completely miss Super Bowl. And, I mean, it talks about the, the super graphic sign ordinance, which is also important for 2026, but I wouldn't say one is more important than the other. I think it's unfortunate that we're not gonna have it. Is there someone who can speak to that? And also, can you speak to why we didn't have this discussion yesterday under 8.1?
Martina Davis, Division Manager, Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement with our Citywide Planning Division. So we're asking for the deferral for that because realistically, given where it's at, it is unlikely to meet 2026 to have anything installed. We may have the ordinance done before 2026, but then there would have to be a subsequent process to install, you know, to select a vendor, install the signs, et cetera. So we don't see that as something that would be making 2026 regardless, and deferring it would give us a little bit of leeway to finish our tasks that we already have on our work plan, as well as we could potentially move a couple items forward sooner, such as the vape shop update. So that is why we're requesting to have a completion date of 2026 for those digital wayfinding signs. And yeah, I can't speak to the agenda item, you know, we were agendized as providing our report to council, so that's what we did.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to ask the City Manager's Office, in the, in the future, when we're talking about citywide planning issues, which we were supposed to be doing last night, this was, this didn't come up, and it wasn't on the list of, of tasks. And so it, it's as if it had already been removed before we approved the removal of it, without having this discussion. And it was also disappointing, not to you, Martina, it was also disappointing that we didn't have an actual workload analysis on, in terms of what, what the trade-offs were for what was there, and that something was going to have to be dropped. That would have been a decision that the council should have made altogether yesterday, and that wasn't the way it was presented to us, and I was very disappointed about that. Because I came late to the discussion, I didn't have, didn't have a chance to get that all the way across, but I do think it's important for these kinds of things to come back to us. If citywide planning is as oversubscribed as they say they are, then they should come to us with an, an actual workload analysis of how many, how many hours are estimated, and not just give us that, oh, we have this many hours and we have in total. It doesn't, it didn't help us to make any, make any trade-offs yesterday, and so we didn't. And then this comes today, it's just asynchronous, from my perspective.
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate the feedback. I'll talk to Rosalyn, and we'll see what actions are appropriate to come, come back and be responsive to your feedback.
Thank you. And secondly, and I can add this to the motion, and I'm happy to make the, make the motion to accept this referral status report, the staff recommendations, but I'd also like to add to that, that the City Manager's Office proceeds with a, with a pilot or an innovation that might be able to help us get digital wayfinding at least for the first six months of 2026, so that we have something available through maybe a pilot program. So that's my motion.
Thank you. And just to clarify, is that, that's an exploration?
I would actually like to direct the City Manager's Office to pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Foley.
I'll, I'll, I'll add, thank you for the report. It's, it's good to see where we are and what priorities we're adding and possibly deferring, but I am a little frustrated, Chair, Councilmember Davis's frustration over the digital wayfinding ordinance. We've been talking about wayfinding at CED for years now, and was never given a heads-up that this was going to be dropped at all. This is the, and, and I'm the Chair of CED, so you'd think that I would have gotten this information ahead of time, particularly since we're, and we're talking about 2026, and wayfinding is really important, that we're, we should have been given a heads-up that this was coming off the work plan as, as a priority. So I guess my question is, what we, wayfinding are we going to put into existence for 2026? Because we need, the, the super graphics, that's so much different than wayfinding. We need, we're gonna have thousands of people downtown, hopefully during the World Cup in particular, and we need to make sure they know how to get around. And if we don't have good signage and good directions, it's not gonna help our businesses, not gonna help our, the people visiting us. So do we have a plan in place for that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. And I'd like to respond to both your comments and Councilmember Davis's comments. Just, this is our first round of doing this, so it's a good learning opportunity for future reports. And Councilmember Davis, what I can commit to is that for our second annual report next year, Tom and I, or other folks that are involved from the City Manager's Office, one of the things that we might want to explore is any drop or defer items that are being proposed. We should ensure that those are being coordinated with any council meetings or committee meetings that might be happening during the same time, to make sure that we're not having conversations that aren't coordinated. So our apologies for that yesterday. In regard to, to your comment, Councilmember Foley, I'm not sure that I can speak specifically to that, but perhaps, and Martina, I'd kind of ask you to weigh in here, since Chris is not here. Maybe we wanna take off this deferral from the list right now as a proposal, and have some follow-up conversations to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with the deferral before it's approved. Because it, it wasn't meant as a drop from the department, it's meant only as a deferral, which means pause and complete later, but I think it sounds to me like additional conversations have to happen.
While I appreciate that, I really want to find out what the plan is of the city for wayfinding, whether it's, this specifically addresses digital, but as it relates to other wayfinding. So I'd like to add to the motion that we receive an update at CED in February as to the plan for wayfinding, particularly in effect prior to 2026, or by January 2026. Does that toll on?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I would say probably the, the best way to proceed is both. So not move forward with the drop at this time.
Differ.
Deferral, excuse me, and we can move forward with an update in February.
Okay.
So you wanna make those amendments to your motion, I assume?
Yes, I'm happy to.
Okay, and the second has already said okay.
Yep.
So we have an amended motion. Is that it for your comments?
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
Okay, all right, Vice Mayor Kamai.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this report forward. You know, one of the things that I'm wondering about is, if this is going to come to us annually, at what point do we, or does the staff insert the, the council in terms of informing them of, you know, the changes? Because some of these are, you know, have been around for a while, and so I think that having an annual report is fine, but, you know, to Councilmember Davis's point in terms of, of other things coming to council, and then us not being aware that, you know, in this, in this report, we're going to, you know, defer, drop, or whatever, do something differently, I think somehow, somehow, the council needs to take a look at these and say, hey, you know, these are the things that we probably don't need to do right now. Or, or I guess I'm wondering, what is the point at which you have council decide, instead of having it come forward, and then we're sort of wondering why we weren't part of the conversation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the process, as it's currently established and was updated with Policy 0-12 this past spring, envisions this process as coming after the budget process, so that we're capturing all of that new council direction. And we continuously, in the City Manager's Office, in API, with Rochelle's help, we are always tracking committee and council direction. So we collate all of that and bring it to you in the fall of any given year, so this is the first time we're bringing it to committee. And so you should not anticipate any changes in direction between this report and the next time we come before you. Whatever's in the report, whatever deadlines are submitted as part of the report, is what staff is accountable to. As part of the rules process that was updated, there may be new council direction that is proposed, and as part of the workload analysis, if, at least as the process is envisioned, if you wanted to move forward new council direction and drop or defer anything in the existing direction, that would be forwarded to city council to make those changes, and that's where you're weighing, does anything change from the existing council direction or budget direction that has already been provided? Does that make sense?
I understand that.
Okay.
The, the, the thing that I see is that, okay, in a few months, you're gonna have new council members, right? They may or may not have any sort of differences in what's in the, in the priorities, and, and I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, because you do it after, like, if you don't do it until October of next year again, right, you're gonna have similar situations. So I'm just wondering, is there a point at which you insert and, and, and sort of verify with the current council? These are all the things that are there. There isn't capacity to do, kind of like what happened yesterday with the Planning Department in terms of, we don't have the capacity to do everything, and so we can prioritize what it is that the council wants, as opposed to sort of doing it after the fact, and it may or may not be what the council wants in terms of what is dropped, deferred, or whatever. So I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can think about that, because, I mean, I know this is the first time we're doing it, but I also think that there may be sort of things that we don't want to drop, or we don't want to defer, or we may have additional things, and so we have to weigh the trade-offs, right? And, and so I'm thinking of weighing the trade-offs before, so that we could be more in line with what the council wants.
Mm-hmm.
So perhaps for next year.
Yes, we, we will explore additional opportunities, and I will add that this is the first committee report, but the city manager will continue to give another update of the status of council referrals in the spring. So that might be a really good touch point if, it should be before the budget process as well, if additional discussions should happen, but we'll take this information back and discuss it with. we'll take this information back and discuss it with the city manager and the assistant city manager.
You complete, done? Okay. Yeah, you know, just for some context on this, there's, this report covers 592 referrals that the council has directed the staff to track and complete for us over the, I think, since 2021, till since 21, so that's, that's a lot. Now, we have, as council members, we all have our own projects and priorities and things we want. And by the way, this list is, ranges from small things like the budget documents that we put in that say we want a traffic calming over on the street over here, all the way to some big, you know, policy, major, multi-year project. So it's, it's kind of hard to sort of, it would be hard for us in any one discussion to say, well, of these 235 that are still not complete, which are the 20 that we prefer to focus on and which ones can be dropped, right? That's the problem. But I will say, we used to have a priority setting session as a council every year, where we did try to elevate thirty, around thirty items that became our priorities. That became difficult because it meant many of us lost out on some of the smaller things that we thought staff should continue. It's, there's trade-offs to both methods. But since we've stopped doing that, I think now that I see this report, I'm wondering if we're kind of losing control of this list and it's getting a little out of hand. And this isn't, maybe it's a conversation for the council to have going forward as to how we want to manage all this work, because I certainly am sympathetic to the workloads of the departments that are understaffed. But it also doesn't seem appropriate to receive a recommendation to defer or drop something sort of as part of this report, as opposed to a holistic approach as to what's most important for the city. So that's kind of my view on it. You know, just as, as the, some of the items that were for, were for drop obviously are consolidating things. If you have multiple referrals that are similar to each other, you can combine them into one and drop one. I know that some of those were just that. That's, makes sense for staff to do that. I'll, I'll perhaps pile on a little bit on the wayfinding item. You know, we've been talking about this, as my colleague just said, for years. A year and a half ago, when I was on one of our chamber visits trips, we saw wayfinding in another city, and we all got excited, and we thought, oh, here's a, here's a vendor. We could, we could expedite this and get it in. And it's not even simply for the 2026. Yes, it's going to be good when people are in our city, but there's a revenue item. We, we were going to make money having that system in our city, and I've been thinking, as we make, do our budget every year, I keep thinking, well, maybe this is the year that we actually start getting some revenue from this, and we're, we haven't moved forward. To me, it's a lost opportunity. And in fact, you know, while I understand that from the planning department standpoint, they don't have the staffing for it, the revenue we could get from this could easily pay for a person to come in and help us get this in place, both in time for 2026 and so we could start receiving the revenue. So I, I think that there's some conversations that we need to have going forward on this, this particular item, and I'm glad to see that we will. But I, I think we ought to be thoughtful about, you know, not, you know, about selling ourselves short or not, you know, receiving the benefits that we're hoping to receive from some of these projects because of our workload issues, and be thoughtful and creative about that.
Yeah, so Councilmember, I appreciate the feedback. I'm going to reiterate what Sarah said, is we will take this back, and we'll look at how we, how we move forward. As you know, priority setting kind of evolves depending on the unique environment every year. And for the last two years, we did not vote on particular policy or referrals. So we obviously will have a unique priority setting process this February 10th as well. And so we'll take that back and consider all the feedback and, and come back to council taking that in consideration and how we design the, the February priority setting process.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Oh, go ahead.
Just one last point, that as we pursue the, that exploration, any changes that are proposed would also have to contemplate the policy that was just updated. So we can think of it as a living document that, you know, works for the council, but we would also need to make changes to that council policy.
Yep, I appreciate that clarification. I don't see any more hands, so we can move on to vote on the motion that's on the floor. All right, that motion carries five zero. Thank you all so much for the discussion. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you both for that. Okay, now we're on to our final item on the agenda today. This is, we're seeing this for, I think, the third time now in the Rules Committee. The, our ordinance, proposed ordinance for the use of algorithmic devices for residential dwelling units. I know we've had this conversation before here, so I don't want to start as if this is brand new, but we'll give Councilmember Ortiz, he's in, he's here, a minute to introduce the item. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll have a discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Cohen and committee members, for the opportunity to speak once again on our memo. As discussed previously, this is a proposed ordinance banning the use of anti-competitive software designed to push rent as high as possible using the data of all clients in the market. The software uses data from clients acting as a middleman to help property owners collude to set the price of rent, distorting the market at the expense of our residents. The explicit goal of this practice, according to internal documents and insider accounts reported by ProPublica, is to maximize turnover by pushing high rent increases that force renters out of their housing. The use of software such as RealPage, YieldStar, and Yardi is not just business as usual. It is a crime carried out against our renters and residents here in the city of San Jose. And while I respect the analysis conducted by the administration, I strongly believe the price of total inaction is high, and we have a moral obligation of the city of San Jose to pursue crimes, whether it's a group of individuals conspiring to rob liquor stores, or a group of bad actors within the property owner community conspiring against half of the city who are renters. And so what's wrong is wrong, and influence and money should not determine if an organization or industry can participate in a crime. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for that. I will move on to public comment.
When I call your name, please come down. You do not have to come in the, the order that you're called. So first person in the microphone, go ahead and speak, and then we have the, the front row for you to sit in while you wait after you've been called. I have Yolanda Chavez, Janeth Martinez, Bob Brownstein, and Gabriel Manrique to start. And should we use wordly? I want to remind people that that's on screen two. And for those in the audience, it's on the big screen.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre, buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Mi nombre es Yolanda Chavez, líder comunitaria con Luna. Estoy aquí esta tarde para hablar en apoyo del memorando presentado por los concejales Ortiz y Coen, para crear una ordenanza que prohíba el uso de dispositivos a los rítmicos para fijar los alquileres. Esta práctica de parte de los dueños corporativos está poniendo en situaciones difíciles a la familia de clase trabajadora, especialmente las personas que ganamos el salario mínimo. Si tiene que poner, se tiene que poner un alto a la avaricia de los dueños corporativos que están desplazando a nuestras comunidades de San José. Esperamos un compromiso genuino y continuo a esta ciudad sobre este problema urgente que afecta a los inquilinos de edificios de propiedades corporativas. Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Can it translate what she said, or?
No, it was translated.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Gabriel Manrique. I'm a community organizer with Luna. I am present this afternoon to put for, to speak in support of the memo put forward by Councilmembers Cohen and Ortiz to create an ordinance to prohibit the use of algorithmic devices to set rents. Tenants have the right to understand how their rent is determined and to challenge any unjust increases. Algorithms, however, obscure this process, leaving renters powerless to question the fairness of rent hikes driven by unseen calculations. These automated systems can lead to unfair and unchecked rent hikes that disproportionately harm vulnerable tenants. Algorithms lack the human context needed to evaluate real-life factors such as income instability, housing accessibility, and community well-being. I urge to prohibit the use of algorithmic setting tools and ensure that rent increases remain subject to human oversight, public accountability, and conditions of fairness and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Waskar Castro and Angel Aliano.
Buenas tardes, miembros del comité. Mi nombre es Jané Martínez, líder comunitario con Luna, y estoy aquí esta tarde para hablar en apoyo del memorado presentador por los concejales Ortiz y Coen para crear una organanza que prohíba el uso de dispositivos orgánicos para fijar los alquileres. Permitir que los dispositivos orgánicos sigan existiendo ha llevado a una tendencia sistemática de aumento de alquiler que tiene un impacto negativo en nuestras familias de clase trabajadora, que no pueden afrontar los altos aumentos de alquiler y continúan siendo desplazados de sus comunidades. Insustos al comité y a los responsables de las políticas a que prohíban el uso de mecanismos algorítmicos en la fijación de precios de alquiler. Los inquilinos deben estar protegidos de prácticas opacas, injusticias y perjudiciales que prohízan las ganancias sobre el, sobre el dinero, sobre el derecho de las personas a una vivienda segura y asequible. Gracias.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. The view of the city's staff to not move expeditiously on this issue is simply unacceptable. The city has repeatedly said homelessness is the highest priority in terms of city action. City leaders have repeatedly said the era of encampments is over. But the era of encampments will never be over if two people become homeless for each one that is removed from the streets. And the reason more people are becoming homeless is because of escalating rents. Now, there's some things that cause rents to escalate the city can't do anything about. But regulating price fixing is something that the city can do something about. San Jose is asking a lot from its residents regarding homelessness. It's spending a lot of taxpayers' dollars. It's asking neighborhoods to have temporary housing that they're afraid of. It's not acceptable to not take action on this issue because the city attorney's office doesn't want the workload. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Amanda Flores and Blair Beekman.
And, excuse me, good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Angel Aliano, and I'm with Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. I'm also a member of the Real Coalition and District One resident. Today, we'd like to express our support for the memo written by Councilmembers Ortiz and Cohen to create an ordinance that prohibits the use of algorithmic devices to set rents. San Jose's tenants are already facing a severe housing affordability crisis, and AI technology has and only will exacerbate this issue with disproportionate impacts on low-income renters. Currently, sixty percent of multifamily units use AI tools to raise, to set, set rent, excuse me. But even one unit is far too many. Although RealPage is currently facing lawsuits by the Attorney General, we truly can't wait for courts to step in. The city must act swiftly to address this issue, and a $1,000 penalty per unit is an excellent start. We urge the committee to move this item to the full council and make a strong commitment to our residents, not corporate real estate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. Waskar Castro, Working Partnerships USA. Here alongside many partners speaking in support of the memorandum co-authored by Councilmembers Cohen and Ortiz, I'd like to thank the council members for championing this very important initiative. As you heard by many trusted partners before me, this is a real issue. A vast amount of San Jose's housing stock is corporal owned and utilizing this one technology. This means that there are thousands of renters throughout the city, in nearly each one of your districts, that are subject to these practices and could be enduring drastically high rent increases that could further housing instability and in affordability. For that reason, we really look forward to seeing this body move this item forward to the full council. We also look forward to just seeing a genuine commitment to this issue. As others have mentioned, should there be an opportunity to move on a form of price fixing, something the city can control, something other jurisdictions have done, it seems like something that if we can help support thousands of tenants, we should look for that opportunity to do so. There's precedent in cities such as San Francisco and Los Angeles, and at the federal level of the Department of Justice to act on this. And rather than sit and wait, we should be proactive in ensuring that we're creating an inclusive and equitable landscape in a genuine fashion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Allison and, I can't read the handwriting. So just Allison, and then go ahead.
Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Amanda Flores, and I'm a community organizer from West Valley Community Services, and I'm also a D5 resident. Today, I would like to express my support for Councilmembers Ortiz and Cohen in their initiative to create an ordinance that prohibits the use of AI tools to determine rent prices. Because we are in a time where more and more renters are spending large portions of their incomes on rent, allowing this tool to continue to exist is only exacerbating existing housing impacts affecting working families like mine in San Jose. Companies offering the software are already subject to an antitrust lawsuit from the DOJ and jurisdictions like San Francisco have taken actions towards the prohibition of this technology, which only adds to increasing housing vulnerability facing renters throughout San Jose. As a San Jose resident, I hope to see a continued genuine commitment to all of us that call San Jose home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I think the name is Giannella, and Gabby Chavez, come on down. Go ahead, Blair.
Hi, thank you, Blair Beekman. I'm very impressed that certain council persons want to take on this issue and try to address something of our human rights values. It's just, I started participating in the community process about 10 years ago. And when I see those things happen at, at city council, it was awe-inspiring. And you guys are continuing that tradition with this item, I feel. And it's, it's just good luck in how you address this. You're trying to address human rights values before money-making practices, and that's a tough balance. And good luck how you can be working on it. I'm, thank you. I can't thank you enough. You're really trying. To also note, Jackie Morales Ferran, the previous housing director, you know, back in 2015, she was really into these data collection things and had really high hopes for them. And I think over time, her feelings and opinion about these data-driven things and what these practices were doing, she was starting to question more and not be so gung-ho and clear about. And so I think you're trying to set a really good standard. Good luck how we can work on it together and, and respect the process you're trying to build. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Gabby Chavez Lopez, Executive Director of the Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley, and I'm here today to also support the memo from Councilmembers Ortiz and Cohen. As we continue to embrace AI and advanced technologies like it, we must ask ourselves at what cost. The use of algorithms to set rents may seem efficient, but these technologies have come, as we've seen, at real human consequences. AI-driven systems don't consider the individual lives affected. Many mothers, many families, they only calculate profit. But housing isn't just a number. It's about stability, community, and dignity, and we know that deeply here in San Jose. And what we're seeing in San Jose is a growing trend of multifamily units. I think we're at sixty-six percent of them already using algorithms to maximize rent increases. These decisions are being made without a human touch, and the result is skyrocketing rents to push families to the brink. The impact isn't abstract, it's real. Families are being priced out of their homes, forced to choose between rent and basic needs like food, healthcare, and education. We must carefully consider the role of AI plays in our lives, especially when it comes to something as fundamental as housing. This is a critical moment to decide if we allow technology to strip away humanity from our decision-making processes. And do we want a future where algorithms are dictating the well-being of our communities? Or one where humans' needs and ethical considerations come first? I urge the committee to pass the ordinance and ensure that we, as we advance technologies, we don't lose sight of the people behind these systems. Technology should serve humanity, not undermine it. So let's make sure that San Jose leads with thoughtful policies that prioritize human lives over profits. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Allison Singalani, SVA Home Policy Manager and a resident of District Five in San Jose. We would like to express our support of Councilmember Ortiz and Cohen's memo for the consideration of prohibiting the sale or use of algorithmic methods of rent setting for residential dwellings. To be clear, algorithmic rent-setting devices and services To be clear, algorithmic rent-setting devices and services serve as a digital middleman, but they cannot disguise the fact that the analysis and use of public and non-public rent data to recommend the highest possible rents meets the textbook definitions of collusion and price fixing. This not only harms our community, but it is also illegal and is currently taking advantage, slipping by by taking advantage of the uncertainty surrounding the regulation of AI, which is something that governments at every level are wrestling with. This not only harms our community, but it's not something we want or we need in our city. We need to be crystal clear about that. We need to take advantage of this opportunity to be clear about what we will and will not accept. We've seen, as other speakers before me have noted, the Department of Justice respond to this issue at the federal level with an antitrust lawsuit, and other local jurisdictions have passed ordinances that create a roadmap for how to do this in a manner that is feasible and does not necessarily have to increase city staff's workload exponentially. Our city's leadership has done too much work to address housing affordability and homelessness to allow extractive and illegal practices to undermine that good work. We urge the Rules Committee to bring consideration of a ban on the use or sale of algorithmic rent-setting methods and services to the full council and are grateful for the leadership of my councilmember Ortiz and councilmember Cohen for their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call Anil Babar, Dmitry, and Lea Tennisketter. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Nella Redonias, and I'm here with the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. Today, I'm speaking in support of the memo from councilmember Ortiz and councilmember Cohen to put a ban to the use of algorithmic rent setting. This practice has led to an overall trend of drastic rent increases, where residents in San Jose are already cost burdened, spending a significant portion of their income on rent. Allowing the continued use of AI to dictate rent prices will further exacerbate our housing affordability crisis and leave our renter population vulnerable to continued housing insecurity, pushing out communities of color and low-income residents. Federally, this technology has been subject to an antitrust lawsuit from the Department of Justice and other jurisdictions such as San Francisco have already taken action against it. Therefore, we urge this committee to move this item forward and demonstrate the city's commitment to our most vulnerable residents and not corporate real estate. AI can be a vital tool to our city, but when used in a way that prioritizes profits over people and renters' rights, it is up to the council to prevent these harmful consequences. Thanks for the opportunity to provide public comment on this item, and I would like to thank councilmembers Cohen and councilmember Ortiz for putting forth this memo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Esteemed members of the committee, my name is Dmitry Kruglehak. I'm a real estate broker and a real estate technology entrepreneur. I speak in strong opposition to the proposed ordinance. The city has no business inserting itself into a federal antitrust matter. The legal and the economic underpinnings of the issue are under dispute. The city has no expertise, no resources, and no legitimate reasons to get involved. This matter will be settled through federal legislation, regulation, and litigation. We can be certain that any potential resolutions will be challenged in the courts. I ask whether the city has budgeted the funds for federal antitrust litigation of this specialized algorithmic matter, especially given dubious economic benefits of the proposed ordinance. There is absolutely no proof that the proposed ordinance would help anyone. The legal risks to the city are just too high, weighted against questionable rewards. The matter needs to be dropped. Let's stop importing bad ideas from San Francisco. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Next speaker. And I'd like to call the last card, which is Nate, it looks like Nate LeBlanc.
Good afternoon. Lea Tennisketter, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. Our goal is to help businesses succeed, grow, and come to San Jose. We are in opposition of this ordinance. As San Jose looks to be capital Silicon Valley invite AI technologies here, it is not the city's responsibility or jurisdiction over those technologies. As was just said, the Justice Department is already working through whether or not RealPage, for example, is a company that is part of antitrust or not. Let the Justice Department do its work. Let the federal government do its work. Let the state governments do its work. This isn't a place for the city to be engaging. It also sends a general signal that San Jose, with its own ordinance against a company or a technology, is not here for business. We don't want hodgepodge of jurisdictional rules across our city for different types of technologies. It creates confusion. It creates legal challenges. It creates additional burdens on city staff. So we ask respectfully that you vote no today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, committee. Anil Babar, California Apartment Association. Approximately 500 hours or 25 hours a week for six months to conduct a comprehensive recommendation. Further enforcement may be complicated by a multitude of factors, and the deprioritizing of work are just a few of the components of the workload analysis that demonstrates why going forward with this policy is a bad idea. Furthermore, existing litigation should preclude local action. No evidence of this impact, sorry, no evidence of the impact this software has on properties in San Jose. There is absolutely no proof that we have been impacted in any way negatively or positively by this software. I will note that the rent registry has shown that for rent-controlled properties, we've seen rents go up by 2% to 2.5% when the limit is 5. AB1482 has protections. There's protections embedded into the system to protect tenants, but there is no evidence that any of this software is having an impact. I would say to let the Justice Department run its course, and let this, and vote no on this policy today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Nate LeBlanc, Business Development Manager for the San Jose Downtown Association, and speaking today on behalf of our 2,000-plus business and property owners. I'm here today to express our concern about the proposed ban on AI rental software. For over a decade, algorithms have provided valuable insights to property managers, helping them maintain occupancy and offer fair, competitive market pricing. It's important to clarify that these tools do not set rental rates, but provide recommendations based on real-time data, which managers can adjust as needed. The software often results in price adjustments both up and down. A recent study from February 2023 showed that using non-public data in San Jose's rental recommendations led to rent decreases averaging 11%, with reductions ranging from 9% to 16%. Banning these tools may lead to higher rents, not lower, undermining affordability efforts that are important to all of us as members of this community. Additionally, local regulation could contribute to an environment where patchwork set of rules complicate compliance for housing providers and potentially stifle innovation. As noted earlier, this policy may also have the unintended consequence of discouraging AI companies from setting up operations here, contradicting the city's efforts to establish tech investment, especially here in downtown. The main driver of high rents is the imbalance between supply and demand, not specific software. The technology is already subject to federal oversight, ensuring compliance with existing standards. Instead of adding more local regulations, we would like to see the city continue to focus on expanding housing supply, which would have a more meaningful impact on affordability. Thank you for your consideration.
Back to council.
Thank you, and thank you to all the members of the public who came out to address this topic today. We're going to go ahead and start with Vice Mayor Kame.
Thank you so much. And since our Director of Housing is here, I wanted to ask a little bit about, you know, if there's anything that we've learned from San Francisco and if, you know, those things are applicable, how would that happen in San Jose?
Eric Solivan, Housing Director. Thank you, Councilmember Vice Mayor, for the question. We have not learned much from San Francisco as their ordinance is still relatively new. In speaking with my colleague in the Housing Department, there's few data points being collected on the matter, as the ordinance is designed to allow for litigation upon finding by either residents or the city attorney's office of evidence of violation. Therefore, that is, there's no clear systems for collecting that data, so at this time there's not much to report out.
Okay. Thank you so much. You know, I certainly understand the potential impacts of anything that has to do with price fixing, using algorithms. There's a lot still that's unknown. I think that at this time, it's sort of a situation where I feel we ought to wait and see. I really would like to potentially have it go to our CED committee for review. And with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to track this item, both at the state and federal level, as well as track other local jurisdictions like San Francisco, as to what they're doing and how it's working for them. I'd also ask to provide updates on a quarterly basis to the CED committee. And, you know, when the Justice Department antitrust lawsuit ruling is finalized, direct staff to update the entire council with options on how to proceed based on the results of their ruling.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I see Councilmember Davis's hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I do think it's too early for us to take action ourselves. We know that San Francisco is much more resourced, much more highly resourced than we are. And I also think it's a little premature to call these companies criminal because there hasn't been, there hasn't been any findings. And just because the Justice Department is investigating price fixing doesn't mean it's happening, or investigating collusion doesn't mean it's happening. Doesn't mean it's not happening, but I don't think it's for us to be the judge and jury on this, on this matter. I do think it's a good idea for us to continue to watch this. We, of course, do want to make sure that whatever tools are available to us are, that we use them, but I don't think that opening up the floodgates for lawsuits when there hasn't been any, haven't been any clear findings from the Justice Department, which is even better resourced than the city of San Francisco, is really, makes a whole lot of sense. So I think that sending it to CED for reporting out as things, as kind of the situation matures is the right way to go.
If I could just respond to that. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. I said it was a crime. I never said the organizations were criminals. Just wanted to elaborate.
That collusion is a crime? Is that what you meant? Certainly collusion is definitely a crime. We just don't know that it's happening.
Councilmember Foley.
Thank you. As the Chair of CED, I'm fine with this coming to the committee. In fact, I think that's where it should be. It's a housing issue, and we deal with a lot of housing issues in CED, but I do have a question about timing. We're working on the work plan now for the first, for 2425 fiscal year, first, last half of it. And I'm wondering, Eric, since this would come from your department, are you comfortable bringing a report into CED? Well, let me ask you this. When are you comfortable? Because I, given the number of man-hours that are involved in this, how much time is going to take you to watch it, number one, and report back to us, number two? So, and what do we have to give up in order to have this work come to us? And when could CED expect to see it?
Two, thank you, Councilmember. So to watch and monitor, as described here today, that would not, that would take far less effort and time consumption and resource consumption. So we could look to bring something back here by end of January or so with an update as to what the progress is on the various lawsuits, where the issues are on the FTC, see if there's any data collection from San Francisco, and provide those additional data points.
Okay. So we're looking at potentially the January CED meeting, which is the end of January, and you think that the Justice Department will have made progress on its investigation by then?
And I can't speak to that. Maybe so. These are ongoing investigations, so we just get reports from what we find on the internet and the resources such as that.
Okay, good. Thank you. Can we then include in the motion to come to CED as, by January 2025 at the earliest? Okay.
Thank you. And that's okay with the secondary, I assume?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And I, maybe this is a question for you, but, you know, you come, you include, you have a CED report that is overall covering anti-displacement in the city, right? So is it, would it be appropriate then for us to maybe roll that, this into that issue? Because it may or may not be a major driver of displacement, but this is, that's the concern people have, is that displacement, escalating rents might, this might be a lever for that? So perhaps this can just roll into that report that already comes to CED?
I'm happy to roll that in. I leave that, there's a priority and discretion to you all to tell me what to do. Happy to execute on that, so we can certainly do that. I leave that to you all.
That makes sense.
Just jumping in, that makes perfect sense to me. Then you're not doing a different report. I think that is scheduled for later in the year, though. The anti-displacement, I think we just heard it for this year. So it would be September of next year. That's fine.
So, I mean, maybe just to sort of be in between, having a report, one report on this one specially, and then roll it into, I mean, like a spring report that gives a basic update, and then roll it into anti-displacement going forward after that initial report in the spring? Okay. Is that okay with the, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. I want to, I want to first thank Councilmember Ortiz, because, you know, one of the things he does for us as a council, you know, despite the fact that we often, you know, might feel like his language is a little more extreme than we would use in some of these issues, is elevate the needs of renters in our city, which is really important to us as a council. Clearly, as we deal with homelessness, as was mentioned, as we deal with escalating rents, we should always center the ability of residents here to continue to be able to afford to live here, and we should always be aware of what might be impacting that. And so I just want to thank Councilmember Ortiz for starting this. You know, I'm a big believer in AI, as people know, and I'm very supportive of the city's goals to build incubators in town, bring AI businesses into town. And AI is going to make our lives a lot easier in a lot of ways and make, in fact, I know that in addition to the rent-setting portion of these tools that apartment owners use, they also use it for maintenance and other needs for their properties, and certainly there's value to these tools. We also should be aware, or at least thoughtful, about whether or not any AI applications may have a negative impact on our residents, so I think it's important for us to watch that going forward, see what might, you know, whether this is an important driver or not in rents, and if so, then take action appropriately, but not rush into taking action without being fully sure about that. So I'm thankful for Vice Mayor for making the motion and for my colleagues for kind of working on how we can bring this back and continue to monitor it, so that we're still elevating this issue and not, you know, letting it go. So thank you, everyone, and without any other hands up, we'll move to a vote. Okay, great. That motion carries 5-0, and we will now just move on to open forum.
Blair, please make your way to the podium.
I'll be traveling to Southeast Asia for two months, and then I'll be back here in February 2025. We'll have a new council and life experiences going on at that time. Well, not, I don't know of council here, but in the Bay Area, a lot of different governments will be changing. I also wanted to quickly note that the Smart Kiosk program has been going through a lot of difficulty in the past year, has been continuously put off and put off from a full council process. This is then the latest of putting on process. Thank you that in the very least, I think you're being sensitive to the Smart Kiosk issues, and that it needs time and deliberation, and hopefully that can be a conversation with community and not just between yourselves. And I think that there's also a certain degree of sensitivity around Councilperson Torres, and I thank you for that, too, to address this difficult issue, to be open about it with sensitivity. Good luck how we can do that. With that said, I wanted to also note that the County of Santa Clara yesterday, they had a big, long list of their technology ordinance items for their hospital systems, I guess. You know, the inventory that they do of all their techno, of a lot of their technology practices is unparalleled. I think they've done a remarkable job with that. Cities like San Diego and Berkeley, they're having real problems getting their Cities like San Diego and Berkeley, they're having real problems getting their ordinance ideas together, whereas the county—at the county level, Santa Clara has just made a model that we can simply inventory all our technology. And I think it just gives us great examples of how to practice well, how to be responsible, how to really move towards an important future of sustainability, and different questions we talk and ask ourselves about. And so I hope you can really respect what it's doing and what we can be building. Thanks.
Back to the committee.
Thank you so much. We adjourned at 3:11 PM.